Good evening, I'm going to open up the workshop session of the City of Asbury Park Council meeting. First, we're going to do the proclamation recognizing child abuse and neglect prevention month.
I was just going to read it. Well, okay. I'm reading it without having read it before, so that's okay.
Sorry.
Are we all doing?
Yep. Ladies, you want to come up? Okay. Whereas there are approximately 2,000 children aged 17 and under living in the city of Asbury Park, children are vital to our community and the state's future success, prosperity, quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Child abuse and the maltreatment of children is a significant social problem that creates significant effects for entire families, communities, and society as a whole. And abuse and neglect are part of adverse childhood experiences that create long-term trauma and have lifelong impacts. All children deserve to be nurtured, protected, free from emotional and physical harm, and have safe, stable nurturing homes and communities that foster their healthy growth and development. Effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service and faith-based agencies, schools, and business communities as well. Communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and the concrete resources that they need to cope with stress, nurture their children, and ensure that they grow to their full potential. All sectors of our community, including law enforcement, medical professionals, schools, courts, media outlets, as well as the public and private organizations, have joint forces to promote public awareness and community involvement in keeping children and families safe, healthy, and connected during April and throughout the year. Be now, therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and Asbury Park City Council do hereby proclaim April to be Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, government, as well as public and private community agencies to join with the city in our efforts to prevent abuse by supporting families and thereby strengthening our community. So, thank you so much. Do you want to say a couple of words?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your acknowledgement, Mayor. We'd like to...I'm from the Mercy Center. My name is Veronica Gilbert Tyson, the Director of the Family Services at Mercy Center in Asbury Park. We work...we have been here, actually I've been here over 20 years. I've been working in Asbury Park, and I have seen our children grow and flourish. And with all the negative things that people talk about Asbury Park and their families, there are wonderful things happening for our families. And it only can be done with the support of collaborative network, including the city and other entities. So, I'd like to thank you for acknowledging the work that we do in collaboration with the city and other entities on behalf of the children and families of Asbury Park. Thank you.
Commission for our, I believe, Tree City USA application. City managers' report on issues raised at prior meetings.
None at this time.
Review of special event applications, Lysia.
The first application before yours for fireworks display, and the date is actually Sunday, May 26th, Memorial Day weekend. Second application is for the Fourth of July fireworks. Next is a request from the Grassroots Cannabis Forum to hold a forum in Kennedy Park on July 6th. The Christopher Reed Back to the Beach event would be on July 26th. And lastly, National Day of Prayer would take place on May 2nd. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Review of this evening's agenda.
We'll start off with the consent resolutions. Resolution 2019-147 is approving of the special events. Resolutions 148, 149, 150, and 151 are all authorizing as part of the electronic tax sale process and setting the costs therein. This is the annual resolution that is presented by staff every year. Resolution 151, I'm sorry, is also part of that. Resolution 152 is for an overpayment of a pilot amount. Resolution 153 is an RCA award for 1124 First Avenue. And Resolution 154 is a disposition of surplus property that has no value. This allows us to get rid of it. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Moving on to...
Hold on one second. 154. What's the definition of disposed of?
It's a surplus property.
It's a surplus property. I mean, because we go down below and we're talking about seven turnout coats, six turnout pants, and Kevin, you can help with this, two boots, one helmet, blah, blah, blah. I can't believe they're all being thrown away. We can't donate them to maybe...okay?
Mayor, you brought this up last time. We will absolutely go through that same program and find second homes for this kind of stuff in the other countries that make the charity, the donated program. The issue with these is, once they hit the tenure...
No, no, I know we can't use them anymore, but a lot of other places in the world, the country can. Okay, good. They're not just going to be thrown away. Thank you.
Moving on to individual resolutions. Individual Resolution 2019-155 is the payment of bills. 156 is a resolution to approve a place-to-place liquor transferations, expansion of premises for McLunes.
Hold on there a second, please. Unless you want to go to the end, I'll come back to it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is asking us to do expansion of a premise. And for many years, this council and previous councils have heard and fielded numerous complaints about one liquor license being able to service multiple venues. We've always asked Trenton for a clarification. Trenton's always responded was, it's legal as long as it meets three criteria. One is shared books, or common book, a shared liquor storage, and an unobstructed connection between the venues, be it that they have to dig a tunnel. Trenton says it's okay. So, I've done a little bit of research, and to the best of my knowledge, Trenton has not changed these three criterias. But now Trenton is asking us, the City of Asbury Park, who has problems with this, and have many citizens complaining about this, to like bend the rules. And once we start bending the rules, it scares me. If we start the precedent of bending the rules, what's going to bite us in the butt down the road? So, I'm going to vote no on this, and say, Trenton, if you want to bend the rules, you bend the rules, just so Asbury Park is not responsible for this. Just because, again, I just see this like...consistency is good, as long as you go by the law, and the law from Trenton is meet the three criteria. And this is not meeting the criteria whatsoever, it's not even close to meeting the criteria, but because if Trenton wants, again, I'm going on. If Trenton wants to bend the rules, you bend the rules, but I think for Asbury Park to set a precedent is totally irresponsible on our part, so I would be voting no on it. Thank you.
Can I just ask, can we clarify what the nature of the expansion is? It was not clear for the resolution.
Yes, it is.
McLunes to Ironwell.
And where they say they don't have a common storage space, I mean, the police report from Asbury Park says two of the three things that they're supposed to do as per Trenton, they want us to say, ah, just go ahead and do it. So, Trenton, you want to do this, from what I've been told, again, with a little bit of research, if we vote this down, it's no harm, no foul. Trenton can override us tomorrow and give them the liquor license. I'd rather have Trenton bend the rules than Asbury Park bend the rules, just because of what could happen in the future. Next.
Starting at Resolution 2019-157, these are various capital improvement items. 157 is the pickup truck for the fire department. This is the existing truck we're going to drop down for other service.
Can I speak on that one? I noticed also that a lot of these police cars need to be upkeep, need to upkeep. You look at them at the tires and look inside, some of them, they need a lot of work, the way I see it. And you get another truck, why don't...I never hear anything about taking care of these cars, why is that?
Every year, we purchase three cars, the police departments, I think it was authorized at the last meeting, or we're waiting for the quotes, it was that last meeting, right? For the purchase of three cars, and we have two mechanics. I think the fleet has been in better condition than it's ever been in the last 10 or 15 years. All the cars go through routine maintenance, it's documented. There's an individual on the police department who coordinates that with one of the mechanics. We've been in the process of replacing the old cars. We're probably about another couple of years away, but we do buy three cars every year.
Okay, I'll check it out. Thank you.
Moving on, Resolution 158 and 159 is personal protection gear for the fire department. This is an annual purchase to ensure that their equipment is up to code. Resolution 160 is the purchase of the RBCs, the rotating biological contractors for the wastewater treatment plant. And 161 is a sole-source contract for welding of parts in order to restore these. These were purchased from a...this will be purchased from a previously adopted capital surplus ordinance. 162 is a warning contract for Millennium Communications Group for various projects around City Hall. This is additional security measures for City Hall, which we're obviously not going to put out for a public setting. Resolution 163 was a public bid for a traffic signal for Fifth and Grand. As we've discussed here previously, the city's in the process of replacing approximately the 11 remaining quote-unquote "line" signals that aren't up to current code throughout the city. This was bid, and we're recommending the award for this. Resolution 164 is amending the parking meter requirements for the Bangs Avenue Garage. This has allowed for the garage to be open on May 4th for the Asbury Alive program. And 165 is authorizing the city to do competitive contracting, it's for the local public contracts law, to procure vendors to operate the micro-mobility program within the city. This is the scooter program that was discussed at the last meeting. Is there any further questions on the individual resolutions?
No. Thank you.
Moving on to ordinances for introduction. This 2019-19 is a bond ordinance amending the Deolake Drive Improvement Ordinance by $300,000. When the original ordinance was done, we were looking at one limit. In the process, we changed, I'm sorry, changed the actual limit, and that increased the cost. We're going to ask for introduction for tonight and at the next meeting for adoption, so we can award the bid within the 60 days as under the local public contracts law.
Michael, what improvements does this increase cover?
Paving to the city border along Deolake Drive. For second reading, public hearing, there's an ordinance to establish the miserable budget appropriation limit and establish the cap bank. And 2019-14 is vacating a portion of Sewell Avenue, which is presently a paper street, as part of the city's waterfront redevelopment plan. We have not received approval yet for the budget, but the second reading and the public hearing can be done. We have approvals for that from the Division of Local Government Services. As expressed previously, over the last few years, the cap bank is, if your budget's $100, you spend 98, you can carry that $2 over for the next year. And the vacation of Sewell Avenue, if everyone recalls, is that about nine or 10 years ago, the city with Asbury Partners had conveyed land. The city did not perfect it. We did not register this, did not register it with the county clerk, and we're trying to fix these things that happened, or did not happen nine or 10 years ago. That includes the agenda.
Matters by the City Council.
Okay, so we've got a few things going on this week. At the Public Library, there'll be a storytime on Saturday, 4:13 and 4:27, from 11 o'clock till 11:45, and it's geared toward ages four to six, with family members also welcome. The Restaurant Tour is also this weekend, and it's hosted by the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. It runs from 12 to 4 and features many of our favorite restaurants here in Asbury Park. Asbury Park Alive, Saturday, May 4th, 1 to 5. It will be an event that will include music, health screenings, family activities, Green Expo, and lots more. So, Springwood Avenue, beginning at Springwood Park, will be closed, as will Lake Avenue, all the way to the boardwalk. It's going to be a pretty incredible event. I think everyone should come out and take part in that. Thursday, May 2nd, there'll be a fundraiser for HabCor, who is helping to house the homeless in Asbury Park. And that will be at the Wonder Bar on May 2nd at 9 o'clock. Tickets are $20, and there'll be a cash bar and light hors d'oeuvres served as well. That's it for me.
On Saturday, April 27th, from 10 to 2, will be an opportunity for you to bring back old medications and drop them off at the city law lobby. This is an annual event, and it's a time when you can get rid of old drugs that are out of date, or that would be harmful to our water supplies. And on May 6th is the Annual AIDS Walk that's taking place at the center. The address is 806 Third Avenue. Registration begins at 11:30, and the actual kickoff is at 1:00 PM. And on May 10th, the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce is having their annual carousel awards. And the nonprofit of the year is this year, the Asbury Park Music Foundation. So, it's May 10th. Please, if you're interested, contact the Chamber of Commerce or Sylvia Sylve. That's it for me. Thank you.
Reservation for the Asbury Park Summer Day Camp program starts now. The person to talk to about signing your children up is Lysia Floyd. This is a day camp that we've been having for many years, and it's really outstanding program. So, if you know anyone that would love to be a part of this, ages from 5 to 12, see Lysia, call Lysia Floyd up. Thank you. There's...I'm going to talk about the Family Fun BBQ for autistic children again. If you know anyone that has special needs children, please give them an invitation for Saturday, May 11th, 2019, at the Springwood Park. The time is from 1 o'clock to 3:00 PM. Free food, a lot of activities, Austin crafts, and a host of activities for these kids. Thank you.
One thing I want to talk about is the Asbury Park Public Art Commission has been working with the Boys and Girls Club to put public art up throughout the city, specifically right now in the waterfront. That's being done by Asbury Park kids. So, if you head down to the waterfront, you're going to see the fronts of lockers painted and garbage cans painted. And I want to thank Marilyn Schlossback, who's also on the Art Commission with me, and a local artist, George Bates, our local DPW, and the Boys and Girls Club for really doing an amazing job. We still have probably six weeks, six weeks to two months more of painting to do, but there's certainly eight to 10 lockers out there and some garbage cans. Saturday is Asbury Park Has Talent's finale, meaning all of the kids who've made it through the last three rounds are going to be performing at Springwood Ave. Park at 3 o'clock on Saturday. We would all encourage everyone to go out to that. If it rains, it's being moved to Barack Obama. Asbury Park has been named, for our 17th year, a Tree City. The requirements to be a Tree City are to have an environmental commission, and if anyone, if you live in this town, you absolutely have to know that we have an environmental commission led by an amazing Asbury Park resident, Tom Pavinski. In order to also be a Tree City designee, you need to plant trees via proper regulations and go through a community forestry budget and do an Arbor Day observ...on our Arbor Day, for lack of a better word. And then last, this Saturday is also the Asbury Park Citywide Yard Sale from 9 to 3. My house is on it. The portion of the proceeds to that go to Rescue Ridge and Wagon Inn, which are two really amazing organizations that pull animals from our local shelters and rehome them.
What are you selling?
I'm not, Jeffrey's doing it.
I'm going to repeat a couple of urban said, the 27th, Asbury Has Talent, 3 to 5, fantastic. May 4th, Asbury Alive, Michael Manzella, Nina, everybody's worked so hard on this, it's going to be a fantastic event. And then after it's done, you can go home and watch the Kentucky Derby, and I'll tell you right now, do not bet on the horse number 20. May 10th, as much as down the road, is the Carousel Awards. May 2nd, from 12 to 1, by the flagpole in front of City Hall, is the National Day of Prayer. Everybody's invited, and it'll be a good ceremony. Monday, we had a collapsed pipe on Fifth and Memorial, and we didn't know what it was, and it was scary, because it handled, if it was sewer, it handled everything from Fifth to Bangs on the west side. So, it's a major 12, 24-inch pipe, which we had to like fix quickly. I want to acknowledge city employees, Tyron Vincent, Robert Bianchini, our engineer, Jason Hazold, who were there and got this fixed as quick as possible. I'd like to acknowledge Ocean Township and Mayor Chris Sisliano. Our jet vac was down, and to fix this, we had to find out what was broken, sewer or storm. It turned out both were broken. But by them being able to bring their jet vac, we saved hours off and we saved a ton of money. So, I thank Ocean Township, I thank Mayor Chris Sisliano. I think that's all I have.
Can I make mention of one more thing this weekend, is also the Asbury Park Music and Film Festival. So, there'll be films and musical events throughout the city, and clubs, venues, art galleries, throughout the weekend, receptions, lots of fun. And the proceeds help to fund the Asbury Park Music Foundation Youth Music Program.
Matters by the City Manager.
I'd actually like to congratulate one of our employees who retired earlier this week, Barbara Van Wagder, the Assistant Planner, retired after about 20 years of service here. One of the things that I don't think the public really knew that Barbara did was internally, she helped us with all the programming. She was intimately involved in the Easter pageants, Black History Month, and pretty much any event that went on, she actually helped staff coordinate it. So, I want to wish Barbara well in her retirement, and she's told me she's going to be traveling with her daughter. So, I publicly want to wish Barbara a happy retirement. Thank you.
Matters by the City Attorney. This time will recess until 7 o'clock regular meeting. Good evening, I'm going to open up the regular meeting of the City Council. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press to close their store ledger on January 2nd, 2019, and posted on the Bolton Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please.
Move it.
Anybody who wishes to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each member has three minutes to speak.
Hi, Ernest McNoly, 400 Deolake Drive, Asbury Park. I was told I could start by, I have a subpoena for the city manager, I could offer it to him. He didn't seem to be able to see me today to accept it, so the clerk said to come tonight. Mr. City Manager, can I give you this?
I'll go to the services.
Oh, no, it's for you. Oh, we want to go, okay.
Ernest, why don't you finish your three minutes? No, we won't, unless you go to Long Branch.
So, a lot of what this is about is, from what I'm understanding, there's a lot of litigation going on in the city. When you come to this meeting, everything seems to be copacetic, but when you check in the background, there's lawsuits floating around, police suing police, officials suing officials, the city terminating people, a lot of discord amongst employees in this building, a lot of complaints about working in a building that's filled with mold and mildew, and years of water leaks and intrusion, and no one seems to care. You go in offices where there's people working, they got catch buckets next to their computer to catch the intrusion rain. One lady's, the whole pictures on the wall collapsed, the ceiling collapsed, and of course, the city manager has no time to talk to anyone. So, I don't know exactly what his itinerary consists of, but at some point, you have to speak to citizens, homeowners. I know he's an out-of-towner, but he should have some consideration. The other thing is, in my building, the sand tender, it's gotten so bad that the doctors have ordered me out. I'm having surgery tomorrow, a lot's due to complications from my victim of violent crime injuries, but I'm in there sucking in mold, mildew, lead, construction dust, and, you know, I can't seem to get any help. We tried to come in and meet with the city manager, but he seems to be friendly with the managers, who used to be city officials, Mr. Farnbach and Mr. Zyla, who the city seems to have terminated for being a little bit abrupt with citizens. But that's who's running my building. And then, of course, the other approach is, the city manager and the city attorney tells everyone, oh, no, we're getting all your emails, we're just holding them, and then we're passing them out. I've sent probably, since he started doing that, Mr. Mayor, thousands, and I've never gotten one reply. And everyone I asked, did you get my email? They said no. So, the city manager could say all he wants, that I'm making a toxic work environment, it's on the city manager, and I only hope that you don't renew his contract.
Okay. You want to... I wish you luck on your surgery and speedy recovery.
I appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
Going to Long Branch now.
Okay. Drive careful.
Good luck tomorrow.
Ooh, thanks, hi. Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. June 14th is Flag Day, and I just looked at our flag up there outside, that itsy-bitsy flag. I would like to see, I know I don't like to spend money, but on that, I would. I'd like to see a big flag up there for Flag Day. I think we deserve it. And there's a big one down, I think the fire department has it. I don't know if you have one in stock, but remember, we used to have a very big flag for Flag Day. And I think you should go back to putting that flag up there. And the other thing is, there's a rule about flags. No flag goes under the flagpole that's larger than the flag that's up there. And, you know, I know we've broken the rules a couple of times, but, you know, I hope you're going to remember that rule about the flag. It's very important that people are patriotic, especially in these times. And I think if you had that big flag, like they do at the car dealerships, I think that would mean a lot to the building, besides the new landscaping, which is very nice, too. lot to the building, besides the new landscaping, which is very nice, too. So I'm hoping you can get a new flag, and I think you should get a new one here, too. That's been there for like 30 years. You know, it's kind of old. It wouldn't hurt to get two new flags. And that's all I'm gonna say tonight.
Thank you, Rita. Do what?
You're gonna get the flag?
For outside? Yes, I don't know what side's not there, but the giant one that goes on the VFW thing cannot go on there or knock the pole down. So, but can a bigger one be put up there, or yes? As big as the pole can hold.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I have outer respect for your positions in your service, try to stay away from city council meetings.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Myra Campbell, Madison Avenue, 1403 Madison Avenue, City of Esberry Park. Okay? I want to start out, first of all, and this is not the main reason why I'm here today, but I had a meeting about, well, a couple months, two, three months ago, with the director of DPW regarding Elizabeth Avenue. Halfway down the street, on the east side of the street, is a no parking on this side of the street. When you go the other half of the street, and that, what I just mentioned was no parking on the east side of the street. You go further down the street, halfway down the street, towards the end, getting closer to Springwood Avenue, and it's no parking on the west side of the street. I don't know why that hasn't been corrected, I don't know if there's a reason, but I'm hoping you'll look into that and get back to me. I also have with me, and I'll give to you a little bit later, a picture of liquid waste from the Lisa waste trucks, which emits waste when turning the corner from the Wood Avenue onto the dead end of Madison Avenue. This waste or spillage is right in front of my house. In the summertime, there is an odor that's emitted, and the stain stays there. I've gotten in touch with the Lisa several times about that, and so, to me, there needs to be regular maintenance of their trucks to prevent that from happening. If it's happening in front of my house, when that truck turns different corners, it has to be happening in front of other people's houses. Now, the main reason why I'm coming, and I would like the people from my block just to stand up, thank you. And I asked them to come, there are others that wanted to come but have other plans for tonight. I'm here as a longtime community advocate in the neighborhood, and many people don't know all the contributions I've made in my neighborhood, but I would like to say this. I have before me, I'm gonna hold it up, a certificate of occupancy, a CO. Whenever someone moves into a rental property, it's required that they get a CO. On the CO, it has the owner's number, name, it has the tenant's name, and all the tenants that live at that address. That's my three minutes? Is that really my three minutes?
Finish your paragraph.
Okay. I requested on March 15th that there are COs from the city. There were 16 addresses where I know that there are tenants that I get the CO with. I was not, what should I say? I was given a little bit of a runaround. There was a request for additional time, and I still did not get the CO. I did get the form that I have with me right now. Now, you might say, what's the importance of that, of knowing who lives on your block? As I said, I've always advocated for the people on my block. Here's the reason why. If there's a fire, how does the city know who, what tenants live there? Number two, there's a single-family house on Madison Avenue that has seven vehicles, two of which are commercial vehicles, another is an SUV, and then the rest are cars. You have commercial vehicles parked on the street after business hours, neighbors need to know who to contact in regards to maintaining their outside property. In many cases, the owner either cuts the grass, or they make the tenant cut the grass. So those of us that live there, we need to make those connections.
Okay, Mara, I'm gonna have to cut you off now. If you have any other follow-up or more complaints than you already gave, if you want to leave them, and I'm sure administration will be back to you within 48 hours. Correct, Michael?
Next week, I'll go to the next phase.
Okay. Tuesday the latest?
Yeah, that's fine.
Tuesday the latest.
It's Tuesday.
And if you have, like you say, if you have any other that you couldn't finish up tonight, forward them, if you want to forward them to me, I'll forward them to the staff, whatever, however you want to do it, Mara. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Dan Smith, 1119 Sunset Avenue. I live next to the house that burned down a couple months ago. Is there any update on when that house is going to be either repaired, torn down? I spent the better part of today picking up debris on my lawn, and I've been doing that for the past couple weeks, so I'd like to have an update if there is.
The city engineers determined that part of it was structurally unsound. The property owner, Mr. Bavel, has filed an appeal of that, saying that his engineers deemed that it could be rebuilt. Mr. Bavel has actually submitted building permits, which we are not signing off on because he wants to rebuild the houses existing. The city's opinion is that it is a complete burn down, it needs to be torn down and built back to the compliance with the zoning district. Mr. Bavel is challenging that ruling also.
Okay, and it's my understanding the zoning district is R1?
Yes.
And he's only allowed to build a single-family?
Yes.
And he knows of that challenge?
Yes, because there was multi-families in there.
There was more than what was permitted?
There was three, four units, I think, and he doesn't want to build it back to a single-family home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And just, I'm curious about that also, Michael. How long does this drag out? Because we didn't hire one engineer, we hired two engineers to say that it should be knocked down. So where is he appealing this to? Construction court?
He can go to the Construction Board of Appeals, and then from there, depending on what happens, he can actually go back to Superior Court, or just file directly with Superior Court. There's still internal discussions with him about it from my understanding with the Building Department. We are holding steadfast that it was a burn down and needs to be built back to the zoning district.
And there's no specific timeline? I mean, so this could be sitting there for three years?
Yes. Unless we could find, it's not at that point yet to be declared an imminent hazard where we can tear it down. That again, would be the engineers going back out, but it's just, there's parts of it that were found to be structurally safe, which is gonna make it harder to declare an imminent hazard.
Dan, quick. Do you want to have to get back up to Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I live next to the property, it's not boarded up, we see people go in and out of there, and it could be a drug-infested nest, we don't, we leave it unchecked, so something needs to be done, and we need to get, band together with a bunch of residents, that's what we're gonna do.
Why don't you just ask, why don't you have, if garbage is blowing all over the place and clearly on his property, and people are going in and out, can Code just go back out and take a look?
We'll see what we can do with it.
Can Code give him a summons? He's not, as much as he, obviously, the city thinks it should be knocked down. Obviously, he hired an engineer that says no. Well, yeah, he's paying the engineer, of course his engineer's gonna say no. But we can't let this go for three years, and if there is garbage, I know there are people going in and out, I've witnessed it. What can we do to be proactive to preserve the neighborhood the way it should be, as far as not violating his rights, as far as any appeals or anything like that, but we just can't let garbage be blowing up and down Sunset Avenue all summer?
I can't get into too many of the details, because...
It's pending litigation.
The owner has a history of suing the city for everything. There is some issues with insurance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Madeline Monaco, I live at Ocean Avenue in Esberry Park. I have a couple of comments and questions, I'll state them all, and then we can address them. We've been trying for about six months to learn which blocks and lots are part of Green Acres, and which ones are specifically assigned to Madison Marquette, and which ones are assigned to I-STAR. We have gotten a bunch of really nonsense replies, and we'd like to know when we are going to get an affirmative answer to our question, a legitimate answer to our question. Second question I have is, what's happening with the beach bond resolution? I know it was introduced, what's the process for getting that finalized? When will there be a final vote on the beach bond resolution? And then I've also, I've been away for a little bit, but I've heard some rumors that the sewage treatment plant is being revisited with respect to whether or not Ocean Township will take it. I know, I thought that was a dead deal, but I've heard some rumors that that has resurfaced, so I'd like to know what's happening with that. And then my last question is about what's happening with Sunset Pavilion. I know there are fences around where the artwork is, I know that the building was somehow not stable, would like to know what's going on with that, and when is that going to be resolved? Those are all of my questions and comments.
Okay, so the sewer plant, to the best of my knowledge, that's totally false. Nobody's approached us to reopen up, like looking into Ocean Township taking it. Ocean Township was the one who basically, I'm gonna say, killed the researcher on it, saying we can't take it, so I don't believe that's true. As far as the beach bond, that's on the next meeting. As far as block and lot, I think Eric Agelar should be able to give you that with no problem whatsoever. And as far as Sunset Pavilion, we met with Madison Marquette last week, we asked the same exact question. They're hoping their structural engineers has everything done, and they believe the north and south ramps and the boardwalk will be open fairly quickly within the next week or so. The Ocean Avenue side, they're not sure of yet, and they're waiting for their engineer to give them the decision.
Okay, so you said we can ask Eric Agelar?
Yeah, he's...
That's a more complicated... Because we've been talking with the zoning office and not getting responses.
Well, I, it's hard for, okay, Michael answered, it's hard for me to believe that people can't tell you who owns what.
It's hard for us to believe that, too.
It's kind of like, kind of confusing to me.
We've provided this information, Madeline, to you numerous times. What it is, is we own the property. In the tax records, it's Madison Marquette, so that we can build them. We cannot build them, as per the 99-year lease that was signed about nine or 10 years ago, I think it was, do you remember? At least nine or 10 years ago. Myself and the director of planning, Michelle Alonso, went to DEP about six or eight weeks ago, we provided them with all the information. DEP said, okay, this does make sense. They were gonna do their final review of it, they were also looking for their copies of the signed lease. We own all those properties. The only thing is that in the forward-facing, the tax records, the MOD 6 system, or the vital system, it's listed as Madison Marquette under 15F. 15F means it's municipal status, it's tax exempt, so that we can just build them. There's no mechanism to bill someone. We own all those lots, the city entered to a lease about nine or 10 years ago for those. DEP has that paperwork. I haven't heard back from DEP in the last six or eight weeks about it, but we own all those lots that you guys questioned.
So Green Acres did not own those?
Green Acres does not own anything.
I misspoke. They don't have jurisdiction?
Who, Madison Marquette?
Green Acres. Of that land.
Does Green Acres own the land?
No, I'm asking whether or not Green Acres has assigned, whether any of those blocks and lots were assigned by Green Acres to Madison Marquette or to I-STAR.
Green Acres does not have the authority to sign any of, any land over. The city, nine or 10 years ago, as part of a 99-year lease with Madison Marquette, gave them operational control of the land into agreements with the subsequent development agreement.
That was my question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Sewell, I have a couple of things. First, I want to say, I walked in on the conversation of the liquor license, and John is actually right. Right now, I don't think one city can come in and actually make a jurisdiction on a state regulation that will affect other cities, because it's just been that longstanding of what it is. If people want to have it changed, they basically can go to their legislators and get legislators to deal with that liquor license, but John is absolutely right. It defeats a purpose, and I don't think we want to be the person setting that. Second, I want to support the fact that Myra Campbell came out and talked about Code, and we've continually talked about these issues, but we're not rectifying getting something stabilized. And for five years that I've known, there's issues with Code, we need to get it fixed. So, also, and this gentleman, right now, if a property is deemed hazardous, Code can go out and at least make sure it's locked down and cleaned up. We have no legal obligation to be sued for cleaning up a property for health and safety reasons. Right now, also, there's some rumors going around personnel issues, and I've addressed it before. Maybe we may ought to think about an ombudsman, that the city council contracts that, to have oversight of employee issues, that can investigate internal issues that are going on, and not have as many lawsuits or issues that we need to address. Because if we need an outside evaluation of situations, we may need to go to that route and look at what we need to do. Also, on the SAW issue, what SAW is asking is that we keep as much public land, especially on the beach, available to all of us. And if we all look at that aspect, even if we have to go to a trust, or even a 10-cent tax later on down the line to keep public, especially beach property, which is making this city what it is, available, we might need to look at that. So we have a couple of different options of which we need to do to address these issues. And I forget the last point that I was gonna make, but that's a lot.
Thank you, Tracy.
Catherine Murphy, Gil Lake Drive. Since October, I have been at City Hall almost on a weekly basis and in phone conversations with city employees and council. And I believe that we are seeking, SAW is seeking, and will always seek transparency. On Monday, I was at the zoning and planning office on Friday of last week, and again on Monday, picking up some documents that were too large, too voluminous, too Oprah. And I spoke with Barbara, who said that the planning board schedule was full until June, and that the pool club would not be on that schedule. I learned today that another colleague of mine had a conversation with Michelle, where the pool club could now be on the planning board schedule as early as the first meeting in May. And it's a little startling to me to have the person who probably was the most transparent that I found in City Hall removed from office, I just find that a real loss and a real shame. Thank you.
Can I just clarify something, Catherine? Are you saying that Michelle told you that it could be, or somebody who spoke to Michelle?
One of my SAW colleagues.
Okay.
Spoke with Michelle this afternoon, who said it could be as early as the first meeting in May.
Okay.
Well, it's nothing new, so that's the second meeting in a row that the council's finding out stuff from our employees after you found out about them, so, which is kind of disappointing today.
Well, that's the reason that I'm speaking out. I mean, this is an effort in transparency for the community and for the council, so it brings, you know, it causes me to wonder what the communication lapse is within the administration of City Hall, that this information is being circulated, and yet the council's not advised of it.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and Michael, I've asked you to look into that. I know you're off tomorrow, whatever, as soon as possible, because this is two meetings in a row where public has told Mayor and Council and yourself things we didn't know about, where, so, I mean, there is a disconnect. You're right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What?
We don't, I think the point we're making is we don't know.
We don't know. I don't know if no one in this room knows when it's on the planning board agenda.
I don't know if no one in this room knows when it's on the planning board agenda.
Alicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm also up here. Two reasons, I was gonna just come to support what was happening and talk about the need to address rental properties in Asbury Park. But then also, that pulled me was the comment about the house on Sunset Avenue and just the zoning and the deeming and the back and forth. As a person who's an advocate for conserving space, affordable space, and decent space in Asbury Park, I think we need to be very careful about how we restrict and advocate rezoning and grandfathering in. I lived across, I live across the street of currently a house that's been burnt out completely for as long as I can remember now. But immensely, and the lady who used to own it couldn't rebuild, but out of nowhere, the new owners, it seems, came and rebuilt this beautiful house that was pretty much just a shell of a house four months ago. And this is right on Sewell Avenue. So when we deem, and I'm concerned when it says, you know, we're losing four rental units, first, is it, was it decent and will it be decent? And necessarily, will it keep to the tradition of Asbury Park? That's all I'm concerning. And COs, we have a problem with code in this town. Severely, a, a house that can fail on Friday can pass on Monday morning. So we need to really address these issues inside of town and continue to advocate and create space for people. We're about to be under a new crisis when the tearing down of Lincoln Village, which I hope stops. Lincoln Village, which is only slated, which is now 100 or so units of low-income housing, is gonna be deluxe apartments with only 26 housing units. 26 of low-income housing units. Then it's gonna turn, like Boston Way, into mixed-income property, right? So that's gonna mean 26 low-income, where it used to be 100 or so, is gonna turn into where the rest of the 100 or so families gonna go. How are we providing for them to keep them in town and keep them in a safe, clean, decent place? That's pretty much, is, we need safe, clean, decent places. This place has been let to go for decades and then because it's now in disrepair, we're saying we're gonna rebuild, but where are they gonna go when they're only building 26 low-income places? Where's the other 80 or 74 people gonna go? Families going?
I'd like to just speak on the Lincoln Village. When the last time you've been over there?
Um, today.
Do you see bedbugs coming out the doors and the walls and everything?
That's what I-
I know people that used to live there, all right? They had to move out, all right? Do you see the people standing or sitting on the steps all night long, drinking in the hallway and things of that nature? When the last time they've been painted? Let's talk about the supervision of that place.
That's what I'm talking about.
And it's downgraded. It is bad. It is terrible.
That's, that's exactly what I'm talking about, Mr. Kendall.
I wouldn't live in it and I don't think you would neither.
Uh, I wouldn't, but there's people who have no other choice. And when they, when you, when you, the new places that you built, you could say you come back, but they're living there because they're poor. They've probably been evicted and can't afford to live anywhere else. They're poor, they don't have good credit.
And I sympathize with that.
So they won't be able to qualify to get into anywhere else. The fact that they live there and they have nowhere else to go and the fact that there are millions of dollars pumped into authorities like that to keep up and they have not, they're falling apart, they're dirty, they're, they're, they're bedbug-infested, it's not their fault. They don't, they're not in charge of maintenance. There's a person paid very well for that. And we have a city that's responsible to make sure that we are living and our residents, our weakest of us, are, are living to the best of their ability. And I think that when we tear down and go the new way, right, which is mixed income, where is everybody else going? Where are the other 74 families going? Because they won't be able to come back. Out of 96 applicants, and I heard this from a commissioner from the old Boston Way from town, 96 applied. Only 16 former residents of the town qualified because they either had issues with former tenants, I mean, former landlords, or they had bad credit. Or, of course, you live in Monmouth County and you're poor. So we have to address that so we don't have a homeless, a continued homeless epidemic, which we are having a homeless epidemic.
Great, thank you, Felicia. And I'm not sure the date, I think it's two Mondays from now, is the Housing Authority meeting. Hopefully you'll take these same concerns to the Housing Authority because the governance agency that we have no control over. So those decisions. And just out of curiosity, you want to share the address to us of the burnout house for many years across the street from you?
I am 1034, so it has to be 1030, 1033.
1033, Sewell?
Sewell.
Sewell. Michael, can we look into that tomorrow?
Yes, and-
So it's fixed?
It's not for a time.
Oh, it's fixed now. It was burnt out for years.
Okay.
They said it was a complete tear down. And then the next thing you know, they came, hauled it out, painted, da-da-da, worked on it for maybe a month, and now it's a beautiful, big, blue and white house that were pretty porch.
Okay. Thank you.
Pam, before you start, I emailed the Director of Planning, Michelle Alonso, when is the beach club on the planning board agenda? And she said it's not yet. Nothing is confirmed, but they're aiming for the May 13th meeting if all their inspection reports get in. So you're looking maybe the May 13th or the following meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. Mr. Cappiano, I should just explain the trying, information that SAW is trying to get. The bottom line is, we would like a list of the lot and block numbers of all properties that are considered designated green acre properties in the city of Asbury Park. And then we want to know of those properties, which ones have been designated to either I-STAR or Madison Marquette? I have, I have been at this for months. I have spoken to Eric Aguilar, by the way, Mayor. He, this is not his bailiwick. He doesn't, he doesn't handle or have anything to do with Green Acres, so he could not help me with this. He's the one that referred me to Michelle Alonso. And by the way, Michael, as I sat in Eric's office with him, he fixed the memo line on all those properties that are, so we are well aware of what, what that is and what you're talking about and the designation in the tax system, but it's not the tax system that we're, that we're looking at. I met with Michelle before she went away on vacation this winter and I explained to her the discrepancies between the different lists that I had found of the Green Acres properties. She understood, I thought, what it was I was explaining to her. She said she was meeting with DEP and would straighten it out. She had that meeting with DEP and maybe it's the one you referred to and maybe you went with her, but we got nothing back from that meeting. So I'm still waiting to hear what was decided with DEP. And from what I can tell, right now, there is an existing list signed by Terry Reedy and that is the only official list. And that, if that's what we're working on, that's fine, then I can go back, I can figure out the proper lot and block numbers myself, but I can't-
That's not the official list. The official list is the DEP Rossi, the Recreation and Open Space Inventory, which you can find on DEP's website. D, D, I've sent you the link. DEP's website has that list. Subsequently, there's been numerous submissions to DEP where they didn't update the Rossi. So when Michelle and I were down with DEP, DEP gave us a huge, like 20-column Excel sheet of old block and lots, new block and lots and everything. That's what Michelle's been working on with DEP over the last couple of weeks. DEP's reviewing what they have, they had questions for us. That list will then be updated and what would happen is, I don't know how Terry would sign that. The Rossi comes from the planning board, so the planning board chair should be signing that technically. And then from there, that gets submitted to DEP. The Rossi is, is maintained by the city, but the planning board is actually the one who authenticates it. So once Michelle finishes that list, I do not know where she is with it. That list, it will be compared to DEP. We fully anticipate then going back to the planning board. There's no time on it to get the full updated list. There's been lists that have been generated as part of, like the Springwood Avenue Park project that Green Acres wanted, but what's happened over the years is DEP never updated the Rossi. The city did a bad job of updating the Rossi. We're trying to figure out 10 years of that issue, but the official list that you're talking about is when you go to DEP's website, the roster of open space.
That was one of the lists.
Is, is the list. That is the official city list.
Okay.
Don't worry about anything else. We have to, to get those number, those, those block and lots remedied, the ownership things. I-STAR owns nothing. We don't have them giving anything. Madison Marquette leases, which you've seen.
So what, what you're saying is the list is a DEP list, but it's not right?
Correct.
So there is no list?
No, the DEP list is the list.
But it's not right?
My opinion is not right.
So-
And that's what Michelle and DEP were working on to fix.
So, Michael, what's not right on the DEP list?
DEP had some of the old block and lots. There are some ownership issues too. The list didn't have the correct acreage and Michelle and DEP have been working towards fixing that.
So it's, so the list is still being finalized then, it's just not done yet?
It's, the better term I would use is a work in progress and the final list, the law of the land, is the DEP, one that's listed on the website.
That's not right?
Yep.
Okay.
Happy to see you up and about, Pam.
Carrie Butch, 500 Gill Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I didn't forget this time. I just have a quick question. Can you talk to us a little bit about the contract negotiations, the amendment to the waterfront plan that you talked about, talked about earlier? Can you talk about what, what you're amending?
What we talked about in closed exec?
Today. On the agenda, you have amendments to the waterfront plan.
No, it's still closed exec. It hasn't been finalized.
Okay, all right, okay. And when you're talking about Green Acres conveyances, there's a real possibility then that we may have not conveyed a property correctly. If we, if we're in this situation, that we may not be able to fully give an entity that wants to purchase the land, the land, because it hasn't been conveyed legally, correct?
I, I don't understand what you're asking.
Do you have more questions, Karen?
I don't have any more questions, so.
Okay, so, Michael?
I, I'm sorry, Karen, I don't understand what you're asking.
I think it's very scary that we're talking about waterfront redevelopment, we're talking about giving away beachfront property that we're talking about could be not conveyed correctly or legally. So I would think that since, this should have been taken care of almost instantly when Pam went into the, to the office. So this is a, this is a huge, hu, this could be a huge issue for anybody who believes they have the right to build. They might not have the right to build if the, if, if Green Acres property wasn't conveyed correctly, correct?
You can't build on Green Acres property.
Exactly. That's exactly my point, Michael. You can't build on Green Acres property.
I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close? Move it.
Second. All favor. We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. We have minutes of, second session minutes of April 10. We have workshop minutes of April 10 and regular session of April 10. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next is the adoption of 2019 budget. At this time, we're gonna open up the public portion for the 2019 budget. Can I have a motion to open up to the public, please?
Move it.
Anybody wish to speak?
About the budget?
Yes.
Yeah?
Why are we amending it?
You gotta get up to the microphone, Rita.
Why are we amending it?
We're adopting it.
Are you lowering it or raising it?
It, it's just-
I didn't read it.
For you, we're lowering it. Your, your taxes don't go up.
I've been away.
We, we introduced the budget. We were hoping to ratify the budget tonight, but we can't because Trenton is behind, but we have to have a budget hearing. So tonight's the budget hearing. So if you have any questions as per the budget, now's the time to ask those questions.
I haven't really looked at it, but is it 47 million? Is that the number? Michael?
What is the budget?
The proposed, I don't know. The proposed 2019 budget is 47,228,917 dollars and 19 cents.
And we're gonna amend it to what?
There is no amendment. This is the public hearing where-
Oh, okay.
Ask your question.
Well, that's, what, is it 2 million more than last year?
Approximately.
Why is that?
1.5 million more.
You know, it's hard to, with all the things that are going on in Asbury, with all the parking, with all the beachfront, with all the building, it's hard to comprehend why our taxes go up. I'm one of them. I don't know why, but let, either stay the same or go down. What's going on? But that's not the case.
As much as the budget is that number Michael said, the amount to be raised by taxes is only increasing $126,000 from last year to this year, which is on a average house that we assess at approximately 363, 336,481, is a $25 increase this year.
I know, but it, you know, our taxes are pretty high here. You can go live in Dillon, live in a $2 million house and only pay 6 million, uh, 600, uh, $6,000 in taxes.
I don't think so.
I mean, like, I don't see the reason why everything's going up again. I know you did a lot of bond issues this year. That could be it, I guess.
Nope, that's not it.
No?
Nope.
That's not it? Okay. Well, I don't know what Michael could do to streamline government. I think he's trying, but I don't know. I think you really have to start with the employees. We can't continue to have these Cadillac salaries that we have. That's one thing. And the other thing is, you should really start 401Ks here so that instead of a pension system, and get rid of that pension system that we're stuck with.
That would have to be done-
And try to get rid of civil service.
That would have to be done at the state level. We cannot do that.
Why?
Because it's state law. So you could write your assembly people, your senator, and suggest that, but we cannot do that in Asbury Park. Really. We cannot say, we're civil service, we cannot say, "You no longer have a pension," until the state says it with new employees. And if the state ever does do it, it'll be for new employees only. The current employees will stay with what they have, according to Trenton, but they haven't got anything right lately, so we're waiting on that. As far as health insurance, everything, we shop around every year. We're under the 2% cap. We're trying our best. This $25 increase is much better than in recent past years. So we are getting there. Again, a year ago, we were still getting transitional aid. This is the first year we're not getting any money from the state. Are we up and running? No. But are we crawling? No. But, you know, we're walking and in the future, we should be up and running.
And Rita, I want to add two things. That, one, once you're civil service, you cannot get out of civil service. There is no legal way to actually get out of civil service. Municipalities have tried for 40 years. The state law says, "Once you're in, you are in." Every once in a while, there's a push to get out, but you can't. It's up to the state legislature to get you out of civil service. And concerning, like a 401K plan, there actually is one in place for newly elected and high, the chief executive positions. It's called, the acronym is D-CRAP, Defined Contribution Retirement Program. What it actually is, is I'm in it. And a normal employee who's in the, the public employees retirement system, PERS, their salary is 10%. So someone making $100,000, the city's pension cost would be 10%, $10,000. The, the D-CRAP program is actually only a 3.5%. I'm in it. So $100,000 for me actually only costs the city $3,500. So a few years ago, they implemented this program. Any newly elected official gets into it. Any chief administrative officer, managers, administrators wind up in the program, such as myself. So- So pension-wise, people like me, I'm actually a little bit cheaper.
Well, how about just hiring people part-time and not giving them benefits? How about that?
Felicia doesn't agree with you.
Part of the budget, looking into the budget, there's new opportunities to increase our budget and still help the people. And part of the Monmouth County A-Team is looking, and other groups like myself and National Action Network and other organizations are looking to have a homeless trust fund that, for the county, but specifically for, it will benefit places like Asbury Park, where we can use, where it's a 3%, a $3 developer fee, but they're trying to increase to 5, developer fee for all new developments. And these profits used for the homeless trust fund can be used in different things, like in the budget, in county budgets and local budgets, specifically local, for, like, cold blues or even rehabbing housing authorities, and different things that way we can kind of use creative funds to kind of cure those problems that Coach Kendall was speaking about, Councilman Kendall was speaking about earlier. And this homeless trust fund, which will benefit certain counties and other places, have received up to $317,000 in, let's say, in Middlesex, $265,000, $265.7 in Hudson, and $190,000, $276 in Bergen, hundreds of thousands of dollars that can be used in little initiatives inside of small towns like ours that can cause the value of life to be higher. So in our budget, we won't increase, and we don't have to burden our local people for certain things. So just, you know, just putting that out there. It's called the homeless trust fund, and it's a petition in certain counties that I just listed have it, and we're looking to engage it in Monmouth County. And we'll probably be looking to come back to the council like yours and for support so we can use it in different initiatives in our town.
Thank you. Motion to close?
Move it. Second. All favor? All opposed? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Have a motion to table the budget until the May 8, 2019 even. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Consent agenda. We have Resolution 2019-147, Resolution approving special vet applications. Resolution 2019-148, Resolution authorizing year-end tax sale 2019. Resolution 2019-149, A Resolution authorizing Tyrone A. Young Tax Factor to complete agreement with service and participate in electronic tax sale process for 2019. Resolution 2019-150, Resolution approving tax sale cost for 2019. Resolution 2019-151, Resolution approving agreement for service contract with Brook Industries doing business at New Jersey, TaxInvestor.com, Internet-based electronic sale tax processing for 2019. Resolution 2019-152, Resolution to refund overpaid administrative pilot 3903 for 807 Kingsley Street, Unit 6. Resolution 2019-153, Resolution approving award contract for regional contribution agreement for 1124 First Avenue. And Resolution 2019-154, Resolution approving disposition of surplus property with no value. Does anybody wish any of those resolutions to be pulled off the agenda? Hearing non-cable have a motion to approve?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to individual resolutions. Resolutions 2019-155, Resolution approving payment bills. Councilmember Chapman will be abstaining from PO 19-01184. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2019-156, this is a resolution to approve place of place liquor license transfer expansion of premises from McLunes Asbury Park LLC. Is there anybody here representing an applicant that wishes to speak on this application?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Thomas Chan Rom. I'm representing McLunes Asbury Park LLC, and to my right is Tim McMahon, who is the president of the LLC. Michael Hafaker was the original attorney who submitted the application. He was unable to make it this evening, so I came here and instead. I understand there may be some additional questions about this application, and I can gladly address any questions or concerns there are in connection with whether or not this expansion is proper.
I don't think there's any questions. I think I made a statement at the beginning that was clear and simple, and I'm going to stick by that statement, so...
I wasn't here for the statement, Mayor. I apologize.
Your protege was.
Okay. Okay, then that's all we have.
Okay, thank you.
Have a motion to approve, please? I need the motion, so...
Move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution has been defeated?
And let me just say, that does not mean you cannot appeal and go to Trenton and have Trenton okay it. And we could have tabled this tonight, would have delayed it another two weeks, and we didn't do that. If you want to go to Trenton and have them bend the rules, we have no problem with that. But I think it would be wrong for the city of Asbury Park to start a precedent that could come back to hurt us with other applicants. And I thank you.
Resolution 2019-157, Resolution authorizing purchase of pickup truck for fire department. Have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Staying.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-158, Resolution authorizing purchase of personnel protection gear. This is for harnesses for the fire department. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-159, Resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protection turnout gear for the fire department. Have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-160, Authorizing the purchase of rotating biological contractor for the wastewater treatment plant. Have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-161, Resolution awarding sole source contract with VR welding. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-162, Awarding the contract with London Communications Group for various projects around City Hall. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-163, Resolution awarding contract to Orchard Holdings LLC for Traffic Signal for Fifth and Grand. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-164, Resolution amending immediate parking requirement for Banks Avenue Garage in the downtown area for Saturday, May 4, 2019. Have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-165, Authorizing the city of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors for operate the micro-mobility program within the city. Have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to ordinances introduction. Ordinance 2018-19, Bond Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Bond Ordinance Number 2018-13, which provides for various improvements to Deal Lake Drive, herefore finally adopted by the city of council of Asbury Park in the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey on March 28, 2018, to increase the appropriation by $300,000 and to increase the authorization of bond or notes to by $300,000. Have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for May 8, 2019. We're on to second reading, public hearing for ordinance 2019-12. Ordinance to exceed the municipal appropriation limits to establish a cat bank for NJSA 40A Call 4-45.14. Have a motion to open this ordinance to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody like to be heard on this?
Yes.
Get up to the microphone.
What is it?
I just want to know, what's a cat bank?
Okay, Michael? Under the New Jersey Local Fiscal Affairs Law and the budget law, there's various municipal caps. There's a 2% tax levy cap and a 3.5% appropriations cap. This falls within the 3.5 appropriations cap. So, for example, you can go up 3.5% within certain appropriations in the budget document. In simplest terms, if you spend $100 a year, you can go up to $103.50 the next year. Whatever you don't spend, you can move to the next year and cap that. So if you spend 98 of that $100, that $2 can make the next year $105.50. That's all it is. We don't spend, we don't go to what we can legally. That's all. There's a cap on the budgets under state law. There's two caps. We don't hit them, so we can use them for the next year. Just the difference. That's all.
Motion to close?
Move it. Second.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-12?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-14, An Ordinance Vacating A Portion of Soul Avenue, presently a paper street pursuant to NJSA 40, Call 67-1 at SEC, and the city's waterfront redevelopment plan. Have a motion to open this to the public, please?
Move it. Second.
Anybody like to be heard? Come on back up.
What is this motion, and what is a paper street?
It's easy to explain, but Michael to explain it. It's something that should have been done 10 years ago, and prior councils forgot to do it. Go ahead, Michael.
If you look at the whereas on page 109, the city council previously adopted ordinance number 2953 on October 6, 2010, which authorized vacation of the area referenced in Exhibit 10. A paper street is just a street that's on paper. It used to be a street, but it's been, it's cloud over. It's not there anymore.
It was never opened.
It's never opened. However, to this ordinance, it was never perfected. It never was recorded into county. This goes back to 2010. So the last couple of meetings, we've been going over this. There's been a bunch of properties that the city was supposed to vacate to master developer, such as paper streets, that never were perfected nine years ago. That's the county and the city. But the city's created this up about nine years ago. We're fixing it. And...
Now, it's set forth in the waterfront redevelopment plan that there are certain paper streets like this one, which was never actually opened up. The street was shown on paper. That's why they call it a paper street, as being potentially the location of this portion of Soul Avenue, but it was never actually opened up to traffic. But the waterfront redevelopment plan indicates that there are various paper streets like this one, which are to be vacated, which is an action of the mayor and city council to vacate any rights that the city may have to utilize that for roadway purposes, and is to be incorporated into development in the waterfront redevelopment area. So the action that was done by prior council in 2010 to vacate this area of Soul Avenue was done in accordance with the waterfront redevelopment plan, but it was not properly perfected. So the action that the council was taking this evening is to basically do it over again and to have the ordinance properly report with the Monmouth County clerk's office, which is what's required, in order to perfect the vacation and relinquish the city's rights in into that area as a potential roadway in accordance with the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Okay, where is it located, this portion?
It's a Soul Avenue from, I was going to say, it used to be a street. If you went down Soul Avenue, the street was there. In 2010, the city gave, closed the street down, locked it off, and it became part of I-STAR's property, but it was never recorded the right way. So if you could get from Soul to Cookman, now you can. It was given to I-STAR.
What, all right, what block is that?
Block, it's not a block and lot, it's a street. Now it's a part of a block and lot. I don't have that in front of me.
I'm just trying to visualize it.
Go to Soul, drive east, and when you can't go any further, look ahead, and that's where it used to be.
Okay.
I may even have a map with me in my file this evening if you want to take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to close?
Move it.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-14?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
There being no further business, have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move it.
All favor? Motion adjourned.